All right. Good evening, everybody. The first thing before we open our meeting is to open up a public hearing for an amendment to Chapter 104, which is Chapter 104 titled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 104-45, to add a handicapped parking space at 3 South Brandywine Street and to remove a handicapped parking space at 215 West Lafayette Street. Mr. Gill, are you going to take over this one too? Or, okay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is a proposed ordinance, as noted, to amend Section 1, Chapter 104, Section 104-45, to add a handicap parking space at 3 South Brandywine Street and to remove a handicap parking space at 215 West Lafayette. There are two exhibits for the record. B1 is the notice of the hearing as given by my colleague, Kristen Camp Esquire, to the Daily Local News for publication on February 7, 2022. And B2 is correspondence forwarding the proposed ordinance to the Chester County Law Library, which we will supplement the record with. I don't have it physically here with me, but that's what B2 is. And it's appropriate now for council to proceed with consideration of the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Are there any questions or concerns about this? Okay. And then is it appropriate to go to public comment?
It is.
Any public comment or questions on this proposed ordinance? Okay.
Be appropriate for the manager to call council.
Okay. So we had to make a motion to approve this, correct? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that would help. Is there anybody?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody who would like to make a motion to approve this?
Mr. Stefano.
Mr. Flynn.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Chapter 104-45 for the handicapped parking spaces at 215 West Lafayette Street and the removal of the space at 3 South Brandywine Street.
Wait, is it the other way around?
It's the opposite. It's adding Brandywine and removing West.
Very sorry. I was reading backwards. The add a handicap parking spot at 3 South Brandywine Street and remove the handicap parking spot at 215 West Lafayette Street. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I think it's appropriate, Mr. Metric, to call a question?
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Okay, the motion carries 7-0. I think we can close the public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, it would be appropriate then to close the hearing.
Okay. This, that, public hearing is now closed. All right. So they'll move on to our regular work session Borough Council meeting. The time is 7:05, and I'm going to call to order our February 15, 2022 Borough Council Work Session Meeting. Just want to explain a few things before we get to our pledge. This is, the way work sessions work, we'll have a number of items on here, and then council will either decide by unanimous consent to move it to a consent agenda for tomorrow night, or we'll decide to move it to discussion for tomorrow night to be acted on separately from the consent agenda. If there is any items that are going to be labored over tonight, we'll just move them to discussion instead of drawing out tonight's meeting. And, yeah, just to make sure we're clear on that procedure. Okay? All right. Let's move to item number two, which is our pledge of allegiance. I'd like to be led by Mr. McGinnis. Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number three, which is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents and attendants regarding items that are not on the agenda. If anybody would like to act on this, please make sure you come up to the mic, state your name and address. This is being recorded for the record. Do I have any? Is that Ms. Shimoney? Is that correct? Yeah.
Hi, Nicole Shimoney, 505 Keystone Alley. This evening, I'd planned on attending, and then I was going to meet someone here, and then they had to cancel. And I thought, oh, I'll just watch this on Facebook. And when I went to Facebook to actually watch the meeting, I couldn't find it. Are we, are we not doing that anymore?
Is it live streaming now? Okay.
Because I looked for it, and I could meet, did it just get up there? Okay.
Does that make sense? Yeah, we don't, we don't stream the public hearings. They're kind of separate things.
Okay, that, that's fine. Then there wasn't anything that said, you know, stay tuned to watch or anything like that, so that's what confused me. But good, I'm glad you're still doing that. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Mr. Hudson?
Kyle Hudson, 524 West Marshall Street. Why are we not streaming the public hearings?
I think because there are legal proceedings, we have a stenographer usually. Is that correct? I don't see.
I mean, would it, does it cost us any money to livestream it?
I don't think so.
Is that something that the borough would consider doing? I mean, just any public meeting, having it recorded for posterity is always better than a stenographer.
I don't know, but if we could, we, if we wanted to discuss that further, we could probably bring that back through probably the Act Committee, I would assume. You'd be happy to do that. Thanks, Mr. Hudson. I thought you were going to plug your streaming. I thought this was going to happen. Any other comments or suggestions from the public? Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number four, which is to announce the purpose of the January 18th, 2022 Executive Session. The purpose was to discuss a legal matter and personnel issue. Item number five, moving on to our Boards, Commissions, and Committees interview. We have an interview tonight for, to fill our Community Campus Committee. We need a member from, I believe it's from the restaurant industry, somebody at restaurant workers, liquor, somebody owns a liquor license. And so we have one applicant, James Capello, who's the manager of Saloon 151. James, are you here? Do you want to come on up? Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Hey, I just want to tell us your position and tell us maybe a little bit about yourself and why you want to take part in participating in the Community Campus Committee.
I'm a manager currently at Saloon 151. I'm a partial owner there as well. I worked with an open Ramshead years ago, worked there for 12, 13 years. I've been a part of the community for a while. I don't currently live in the borough, but I lived and worked, you know, had interest in the borough for quite some time. I just have interest in, in having a part in what we're, what we're doing with the community as far as working with the police, the university, the restaurants, and the town, town as a whole. I know we haven't done anything with it for a couple of years, but as saloon, you know, and myself, I think that we represent the borough well in what we do. Think that could be a good option to give a realistic viewpoint from the, from the restaurant.
Anybody on council have questions for Mr. Capello? Mayor B. Baptiste?
Did I hear you say you do not live in the borough?
I currently live in West Ocean.
I guess I'll ask, you know, I'm familiar with many of the bars in town, so 151, would you say that you have a large portion of your business is college students or?
Fair question. We, we do do college student business for sure, but we, I don't know that it would be the bulk of our business at this point. You know, we do see that a couple of days a week, we have a strong business from lunch to happy hour, dinner, we do private, I mean, probably the large bulk of our business, but like any other bar that gets any of the, any of the college crowd in later, you know, it certainly helps, helps the bottom line.
Right. Any other questions for Mr. Capello? Okay, well, we will make this decision tomorrow night, but I think, considering you're the only applicant, your chances are pretty good that, that you'll be filling that position. So, thank you so much for your service. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item number six, which is the annual report presentation of a pop-up metro shuttle concept. We have Joanne Kelton and Tom Hickey here from our Committee to Reestablish Rail Service. Hi, come on up.
Joanne Kelton from the rail service. I submitted my annual report to council, so I thought rather than rehash, I would ask if there are any questions or if there was something I should go over in particular, just in the interest of time, to see if anyone had any questions about any topics that are in the report.
Yeah, I appreciate not going back through everything on that. Yeah. Miss, members of council, any questions from that report that was sent out? Mr. Flynn?
Good evening.
Evening.
Mr. Thank you, thank you very much for coming.
Sure.
The, got a couple of questions about the situation. I reviewed the, I hate this mask. Everyone else does. The, I reviewed your, your position paper about what work you guys have been doing throughout, throughout the year, and I can put my finger on it. But anyway, the, my first thing is that your committee is, is not a standing committee. It's an ad hoc committee.
Right.
Okay? And that, that makes that position an advisory committee to Borough Council.
Yes.
With no administrative powers.
Right.
So, listening and watching the last couple of years with your enthusiasm, trying to get funding through the various options, I'm really curious, when you fill out a request and it says signature, how's that being signed?
I don't know. I forwarded it to Borough Manager. The ones that we submitted so far were in.
Well, I'm looking at seven, seven different ways that you've, you've applied for different grants, the RACE grant, the partnership grant, the RACP grant, the DV RPC grant, I'm sure, and the rescue fund grant. I'm sure each time you fill out an application, like the Senator Casey, there has to be a signature spot for administrator to be filling out or signing the application.
Right. For the RACE grant, we sent it to the borough, and the borough submitted electronically, so I am assuming the Borough Manager signed it. I mean, we put his name on, on it, so I'm assuming it was stamped with his name or he signed it. Oh, you saw it? Okay.
Okay.
Now, the other funding opportunities that you mentioned are opportunities we have not, these, they're coming up. There will be applications filed, so we would do the same thing. We would forward them to the Borough Manager in the boroughs, because the borough is the one who's actually doing it. We're doing the work and submitting it.
Yeah. Yeah, that was my major concern.
Yeah.
That, that no documents get submitted for requests for money until the ad hoc committee brings it to the Borough Council President, and you present the entire case and let council decide whether they want to be involved in any of the grant requests or any funding requests.
Okay, so you want us to do that personally?
Yeah, because you're an ad hoc committee. Yeah.
So far, we've been doing it to the Borough Manager, and then whatever happens after that, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
But we can certainly follow that procedure.
Yeah, the ad hoc committee is a committee of Borough Council.
Right.
Not the Borough Manager. So we need to know, for example, if you apply for a grant and we apply for a grant for funding for wastewater, that could ruin our chances of getting the wastewater grant and if you guys get the, whatever grant it would be.
Okay.
Because there's only so many grants around, and once we start using up our ability to acquire grants without council knowing it, it puts the borough at a disadvantage. So, you know, moving forward, if, if the Borough Council President agrees with me, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure, but that's, I'm one person's opinion. That's all I have, Mr. Stefano.
I think, considering the, the role of the committee, that anytime there is a grant application or request for money, absolutely council should, should give approval before that happens, for sure.
And that hasn't been happening?
Not that I know of.
No?
Not that I know of, no. I haven't got anything, so.
Okay.
No, it hasn't come in front of, I've been in charge of finance for about five years, and it's never come in front of finance.
Okay.
And Mr. Allen now is the Chair of Finance, so, you know, that's the place, the first place it starts.
Where, finance?
Yeah, finance, Mr. Allen. And then, then the finance committee, you know, at committee level decides whether it's viable, and if it is, then we move forward with it.
So, if that's the case, so it goes to finance first and then to council. So how much time would that take so that we know to do this early enough to get it submitted on, because these all have deadlines, just?
So I think, you know, to answer that question, you, you have to look at your deadline, and then we always have our meetings at the same time, so, you know, the committee, finance committee meeting would meet, and then the, this, this session would happen the following week. So as long as you can get it there for the committee meeting, it would essentially be a week after that that we would take action on it.
Okay.
Excuse me, Ms. Kelton, is there currently any applications out in, out in circulation right now for, for review from outside people?
No, we submitted a request through State Representative Diane Heron for the RCAP just for a line item to get on into the budget. That's supposed to be approved in June, and then assuming we get that approval, then we could file an application. There are already two line items that I found in the budget that are the boroughs. I was told we could apply since there are already line items there. Didn't do that because I did, for the, for the exact reason that you mentioned, that perhaps we would be overstepping, and that line item might be for wastewater or something else. So we didn't want to do that. We wanted our own. So we, that's what we requested, a line item for our project, and hopefully in June we'll get the okay, and we can put an application then. Okay. So I'd like to turn it over to Tom Hickey if there aren't any more questions, because I know, because of the mayor and, and some new council members, we'd like to take the bulk of whatever time we have left just to review the project a little bit.
Yep.
Good evening. Joanne has asked me, most, the bulk of her report dealt with what we did in 2021, and she wanted to give a preview, all of it leads to what we were trying to do in 2022, so to give you a little bit of an overview. All right, where do I move forward? Oh, thank you. Okay, as I, as I said, we're focusing on what we're looking at ahead. Most of our efforts for the last seven years have been focused on restoring the Westchester Line back to service as we knew it, a part of the commuter system coming straight up, giving you a one-seat ride. Got it. Got it. Thank you. Offering a one-seat ride all the way to Center City. Studies conducted by DV RPC have indicated that that would detract nowadays with development. About 1,900 riders, just for preference, or for reference, we were carrying 208 riders. Six, so clearly a lot of development and a lot more potential. And there is a capital, capital cost, Pendot put together for it, that's $380 million. A lot of, you know, very expensive road to a small house, so. We acknowledge SEPTA, that SEPTA has priorities of state of good repair, as well as other projects with higher priorities to them, though we're not going to see $380 million to advance to the beginning of, to the top of their program at any time soon. Since our charge from the council was to affect the restoration of service as soon as possible, we were looking, we're looking, we started looking at other means in the last two years. That's what, where the rail program, what we're looking at right is a Westchester-Wawa shuttle. Same DV RPC studies say it won't get you 1,900 riders, but it'll get to 1350, about 70% of what the through ridership would, which again, when you compare it, the 208 we were carrying, 86, that's not a bad number either. It's, it's just five minutes longer in travel time, and also involves, as I'll describe here, some innovative techno, groundbreaking technologies, which I think will put Westchester on the map in both rail transit circles as well as innovative technologies altogether. Trying. There we go. Got it. Okay, well, one of us got it. This is a table, I don't get the question, why do we need train service to Westchester? It's not a direct run. Everybody drives to Exton. Soon they'll have Wawa to drive to, and there's buses they can connect with. Well, this shows a comparison of running times for the shuttle, so this is not even the through. 64 minutes to Center City from Westchester to via the shuttle, making a train change at Wawa. The through service was 59 minutes, so it's only a five-minute saving in travel time compared to the, take the 104 bus down 69th, that's a 95-minute journey. 99 minutes taking the 90 to Exton because U doesn't go there directly. Automobile options, 77 minutes if you drive to Exton, 81 minutes estimated if you drive to Wawa and take the train from there. And that's a little bit insidious, because you must have a car at your disposal to do a park-and-ride at either of those stations. So to have a car, a lot of people will just continue to drive, so, and that puts any borough residents at a disadvantage, that you must own a car in order to not use it in event.
Mr. Hickey, when you say shuttle, just to clarify, I know, whenever, usually when people hear shuttle, the first thing they think of, they don't think of it's actually, it's still a train car.
Oh, it's still be a train car.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, because I know there's people listening that are probably like, yeah.
Think of it because it's all over the place, and this is just another shuttle, except instead of using a little minibus, we're using a little mini train. And that's because the train is the most direct route to Wawa than, than driving through the back streets. So in our prior, previous work, we had the reference, the DV RPC ridership analysis, which started us down this road in 19, sorry, in 2011. That was followed by the borough study, the study we did, an operating, a feasibility study, and that was followed on with SEPTA and Pendot conducting their own joint feasibility study to check our numbers. And that's, that's again, been looking at the, 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 the through service, taking the, the SEPTA trains and extending them all the way up here and rebuilding them in the same manner of Wawa has been built. We'll point out, if you've been down there, it's a magnificent railroad. You could run a cellas on that railroad right now. That's the way SEPTA builds things. Very expensive, 188 million for a three-mile extension. When I envisioned the Wawa extension in 1988, I can assure you, we were talking about $55 million at that time, and we thought that would be a hard sell. So things just get more expensive over the time, the longer you wait, and the question comes up, do we need a facility like that for a 12-minute shuttle ride? Our answer is no. But we don't want you to take our word for it. So what we are proposing, here we go. What we are proposing is what we're calling RailPACs, the Passenger Rail Initiative, that focuses on, it starts with a two-year demonstration, so we can see whether this really works as opposed to just theoretical, and whether people will use it. At the end of the two-year demonstration, we can either continue on or, or say, well, we gave it a try and it's not, not working. Want to compare here, we're talking about approximately $8 million capital cost versus $280 million if SEPTA could catch that budget. Talking because, there we go. So, we're, we're proposing to start with a two-year demonstration program. It's to prove the concept with minimal public investment. That means temporary track improvements, we, the rail basically needs to be, what killed the line in 86 for us, I was with SEPTA at the time, I actually am the person who took the line out of service and made the recommendation to park it. So this is kind of, but the track that gave us, the, the actual rail that was giving us problems. So there's a need for somewhere in the vicinity of $80 million to tear up the rail and replace it with new stuff. We're not proposing that. That's further down the road if we demonstrate that there's a, for the, what we're proposing is work with the rail that we've got out there, do temporary parking, do a temporary maintenance facility. We've got an arrangement with driving, which we can lease, basically rent the rail car platforms and the electrical system entrepreneur, so there's no long-term investment, cars or shop facilities. Run the trains, oops, go back, run the trains to Wawa back and forth, build a consensus for both, for a permanent option, both with SEPTA as well as with the public. And also, it's important for us to coexist with the passenger rail operation, the tourist, trains are an important commercial element for the borough, and we want to make sure that, that, that coexists. So this is either or proposition. Here we go. First and foremost, we do need to do work on the track, so that, that RACE grant that we applied for back in July, and the one that's coming up, focuses on storing the track to a state of, it has been maintained, the track has been maintained by volunteers, by the Westchester Railroad History Society, Association, they would continue, but they need a, they need a lift to get started. When SEPTA had the line in, running it up until 86, it suffered under neglect. Drainage had been, you know, mud had filled in, walls had collapsed. We need to clean up that stuff and at least get, get it to a starting point where the volunteers can continue going. Right now, they keep it in what is called Class 1 condition, stored to Class 3 condition, which is where 86, that gives us 60 miles an hour versus what we can do right now with the track condition, which is 15 miles an hour. So that's toward everything. If we don't get the track or upgraded, we, we won't be able to keep it in that 60-hour condition. Here, here's the rail car we're talking about. This is a, this is a former London Underground D98-type underground thing, and it's been equipped with a innovative, groundbreaking battery-powered system. What's key to it is not the batteries, but the charging system. At the end of the line, it tops up the battery through an inductive source. There are 23 of these running around various parts of England right now, brand new. We're building on their experiences and such. We've talked to the innovators for that, and what they are proposing for us is the lease, the lease for two, the power charging system, which is not unlike an electric car and technology just as far as the transfer part, and a temporary, you can see there's a high, high floor to these cars. They're also leasing us steel ramps that would be put up, so all of that would go away at the end of the lease period. But with the battery technology, they can, they can run from Westchester to Wawa in 12 minutes. We have a schedule we put together in which it is capable with one train set to go shuttle back and forth and meet all trains at Wawa. So if you're trying to get to Westchester, you just have to catch a train to Wawa, and that by definition will go to Westchester by, this is very aligned with, and we've talked extensively with SEPTA. Right now, they're going through an initiative, you know, with COVID dropping ridership to all-time low. They're using this opportunity to imagine rail and think of different ways to run bits and pieces. Expensive system that it has been in the past, and breaking off on a, a line like Westchester and running as a shuttle has them interested as well. So again, the lease package is available, including the rail cars, the power systems, and it all went out to Central Pennsylvania to see it in action. Joanne, our chair, actually ran it for a little bit back and forth. It's an electric train. The, this is just a schedule, I want to read the fine print demonstrating that yellow are, be the shuttle train. So we would, we would be able to meet every train and go back and forth with only that. Improvements are needed to boat, to the four stations that are en route West, Westchester. There is the Market Street Station plus the old Westchester University. This illustrates what we have in, it's not a laser here, is it? This illustrates what we have in my, not a laser here, is it? The green is the parking. Reason the parking is green is because we're proposing to do a innovative, environmentally friendly way of doing the parking, which not paved, but actually gravel with a, a grass topping on it. So when people wouldn't see a big gray whole parking lot, they would see grass. There aren't cars on it and hope our passengers have cars on it. The area which is, you see a little yellow band, horizontal yellow, the ramp and the platform, this would be handicapped access accessible. That's where the, the. Be simple to find improvement, but that's, that's what we're proposing. Something similar at Neil Street. The old Westchester University platform, which was just a platform, is on the left side of Neil Street. This is, the green here extends on SEPTA property. All this is on SEPTA property. Gives us fifty more parking spaces, again with that yellow ramp platform structure to board the train, taken away at the end or ended if needed. For the parking, we're looking at using something like this or this itself. True grid is basically, we were originally just going to do gravel parking because again, we don't want permanent improvement for the short term. This is a system that these, the black square you see up top are brackets, which you put down on the, to the ground. Put gravel over it and it holds the gravel in place. And again, you can put topsoil in that area and actually have grass going on in place. Two years end, we're not going to do this anymore. You pick it up, Borough can use those else that temporary parking, it doesn't have to be grass. But again, it's, it's something that can be reused and recycled. The other thing we would need is a place to maintain the equipment. And we've got a place between Union Street and Hart Street on the right of way, which is all on SEPTA property, enough to put a Quonset hut, a track so that we have an enclosed place to open up car and maintain it. Again, everything is transferable. The driveway and the walkways are all, are all the track material. So yeah, it's a different use of it. Have for offices, we'd rent a trailer, an office trailer, and the Quonset hut can be taken apart. entirety or impart by the Borough for all removed, fault storage or something. Point is, is there's independent utility for all these components afterwards. So looking for, looking at this program at this point, what we have laid out and again, this is some, this is a work in progress. There's a lot of things we have to work on, including where's the money coming from? And I can assure you, it's not going to come from the Borough. So that's the, the tenant we have set for ourselves. We've tried to find other sources, both the operating and the capital grants. But it really breaks down into four stove pipes. The original, the fixing the track, which we've already established, is going to take about seven million. Six point nine million. Restoration of the four stations, providing parking, that's about four hundred thousand, about five hundred, about half a. The temporary shop and tracks for, for maintenance of the facility. There's no capital cost associated with the train, with the train recording because again, those are all be leased on an ongoing basis. Overall, our, our capital, our capital ask right now is eight million dollars, obviously not from one single source. And we're, we're looking how to parcel those out as well as finding matches for all of those as we move. I'm not going to go into the details. Happy to have the presentation if you'd like, but this gives you a sense of all of the things that we need to do in, in each of the years to make, get this up and running by twenty, twenty, May twenty twenty-three and then run it for two years, learn from the experiences and make it permanent if necessary or desired by twenty twenty. There we go. So anyway, that, that is, that is the end of.
Well, thank you. Very, very thorough and I think there's a lot of excitement in looking at some of the plans that you guys came up with. Let's start with some questions or comments by council.
Mr. Stefano.
Yeah, Mr. Stefano.
I always have questions. The, Mr. Hickey.
Yes, sir.
Using what you mentioned, use the tracks as we have them out there now. Will they pass the national transportation and SEPTA's approval?
By definition, they, they have to, yes.
Okay.
And this is not unlike where we were in nineteen eighty-six. We're having the same problems with the old rail. And again, when I talk track and rail, I just want to say it's a system. So there's ballast, there are the wood ties, there are, there is the rail, all three of those functions and drainage, of course, three most important things to track, drainage, drainage. So all of those systems need to function as a whole and you've got the ability to run. We had the same material. I mean, Westchester Railroad is out there changing out ties on, on almost every weekend. So the ties are in reasonable shape. The, the rail, the rail has been the problem then, it's the problem now. It is the oldest rail in the SEPTA system back before we abandoned service entirely or excuse me, we suspended service. Suspended, before we suspended service in nineteen eighty-six, we had a track gang take the line out of service for a month and do everything they could as far as keeping rail and keeping it in, in, in good condition. The condition defines the speed. So in order to be class three track, you have to meet track three conditions. And we will, we will know that we do because if we don't, the FRA will come out and fine us.
Okay, to follow up with you, the, the insurance.
Yes, sir.
And you said that the product, the, the underground rail system, the, the trains.
Yes.
The, the total ask is, you know, your fundraising is basically eight million dollars. Who's going to be responsible for the insurance? And who's going to be, how are we going to, what's your, your anticipation of, who's going to sign the document to, to do all this rental stuff? And if something goes wrong, is the Borough going to be held responsible?
I, I would, as a former commuter rail operator myself, I would strongly advise the Borough not to sign anything that gives you liability for this. There are, you know, the railroad, the, the freight, not freight, I'm sorry. Tourist Railroad has insurance, SEPTA has insurance, there's sovereign immunity. It's a very complex issue, but the point is, I do not think you would want, you, you have responsibility, so I am working on that assumption. So that, that goes back to the more broader question of who is it who is actually going to be the operating entity? And I'll let you know as soon as I finish my white paper because then I will know myself, at least who I'm recommending. There are a couple potential parties out there and that's what I'm, I'm working on. Right now, the Four States Railroad who is doing business is Westchester Railroad, handles all of that. And they continue to speak positively about participating. I am just with, you know, as, as an old operator myself skeptical about how long their enthusiasm will last. So I want to make sure we at least have something that's sustainable for two years. Talking also to the TMA about whether their involvement, because this is really is then no different from the shuttles that they run and insure, except it's steel wheel instead of rubber tire.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Caro, yeah?
I'm curious what you know or your thoughts on the university's ridership contribution versus just general residents?
Sure. We're, we're positive about the role of these, and I say universities, because Shaney is also, both, both universities have downtown campuses that people need to happen. And there are other universities in the region that have to participate. So we, we're, so there's potential, Joanne has focusing more on that role, but we are trying to encourage not just the interest, but the enthusiasm from both universities. We're, frankly, we're getting better nibbles right now from Shaney, especially with the battery program because they have some advantage. Such innovation, basically this would be a test track for this technology in the Western Hemisphere. It's right now, these, A and that's it. But we, we are trying to encourage that because we're, system like, particularly self-contained little line like this, it needs, you know, something other than commuter. That's what we're, we're trying to build that enthusiasm.
Thank you.
Two questions. Did I understand you to say there's somewhere in central PA that's using this type of rail system?
The, the, this, this group that, that has been experimenting, has set up a couple, based in the UK and has set up a couple operations in the UK. An entrepreneur from Pittsburgh who is dealing with us has bought a train, has bought a car that you saw there from Princeton, which is the orange colors. I have, but that's, but the, he's bought, he's bought a set and is running it, there's a museum. Pennsylvania. Had as his test track.
So it's, it's not being used to transport commuters?
No, 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 no. Going back for a demonstration. He's looking for a test, he's, he's looking for a test track with a little bit better visibility and driving to Orbisonia, further beyond what, beyond State College. So that, that's where we've gotten his interest in joining us. This gives him a, this would give him a test track to demonstrate. Isn't the technology that has a lot of potential, particularly the recharging ability of in ten minutes, you can top off the, the power batteries and be good for another six or seven round trips? You have two questions, ma'am? You have a second?
Thank you. So the, the eight million dollar ask, so if I understood correctly, that includes everything, including the lease of all the equipment?
Sorry, you're saying the lease?
The lease of the, the train itself as well as the ramps, et cetera.
Other than what I've listed, listed in the capital costs, the, the maintenance, we would, you would have to be provided. Track, of course. But they would provide everything involving the rolling stock, the trains, including spare parts. It would provide individual, as it were. Does not include the operating crew. So we have to get, that, that's where the insurance likewise goes with who's, who's got their hand on the controls. Well, Joanne did a very good job that, making that round trip, she's not available for regular service, although anybody would like to volunteer, you're welcome. But the point is, is rolling stock, it's the platforms, battery, battery system, mobility to keep.
So two follow-up questions. So the, after the two-year period, would the tracks be capable if they would decide to move forward and do the whole, the whole thing? Would they, would that be part of that final project or is that thrown away?
No, no, I, I would not consider keeping, get away with two years with track, but I would not suggest it's any more sustainable. Look at that as a permanent solution anymore. It was in eighty-six. What I would guess and the way I have broken up, if, if we can demonstrate in the, in demonstration period, that this is indeed is something that worked, we would go after federal funds called small, small starts, not, not, not the program SEPTA uses. Go after a small start grant to, first of all, replace the rail properly and get good railing. In addition to that, apply for more permanent improvements to stations effectively, do, do everything that would keep, keep it running for another ten, fifteen years. Oh, and also rolling stock because unless we want to keep renting the same trains over and over again, rental gets expensive over time. Look at other rolling stock options, diesel, self-propelled diesel trains. There's a whole plethora of electric hydrogen trains that are all coming on the market now that I haven't been there before. And look at those shop facility that I proposed, likewise not sustainable. It doesn't scale up for a larger fleet. SEPTA property just below the Market Street Station, so it's the right place, but they're very thin and fine space, not a permanent, you know, location. So I would say if there is support and if the demonstration has done its job to demonstrate garner support for a permanent solution, then we pursue a more permanent solution, deal something far less than three hundred and eighty million dollars that's been proposed by SEPTA.
Thank you. And, and finally, I, I guess, and maybe I'm late, late.
But if we go, you know, about, go down that road, everything that we, demonstration period is recyclable elsewhere. We're not, we're not doing this two-year road and saying, well, we've started two years, we need, we don't need to continue. And I'm afraid I have far too good of a history record of shutting down rail lines that I really like to be happy about. Westchester wasn't my first abandonment.
Thank you. Just, just one more question. Joe, I read the ESI report that was mentioned in the, the annual report. And one thing I didn't quite understand, and I think you said here that there wouldn't be any cost to, to the Borough, but I wasn't clear on their report, what, what would be the local ask? I mean, what, are you saying there would be no cost to, to the Borough in any of this?
Well, the way, the, the way the original extension was structured, which is what ESI is really referring to in there, that was the red box that went up. Traditionally in this region, municipalities do not contribute capital cost to SEPTA projects. Counties do them. I would imagine, like I was saying, doing that way would do it. I would, and I, again, I'm, I'm putting together this program and ideas for which way to go. I would continue to try to tap the county SEPTA section, even on the demonstration, not start a new president of, of boroughs, partly responsible for the operation and direction of services, rail or otherwise.
Thank you.
That helps.
Anybody else have a question or a comment? Mr. Hudson?
Hi, Kyle Hudson, Westchester Chronicle, a couple of questions. So one of the things you kind of touched on at the end, but was really missing from your report was how much energy is this going to cost? Like how much electricity, if this is an electric train, how much electricity is going to have be required to be generated? Where is that energy going to be sourced from? Because even though it's an electric train, you got to get that energy from somewhere. And how will that impact our sustainability goals, right? We've set benchmarks here to reduce our energy consumption. How is this project going to impact that, especially something like a diesel train?
Frankly, I can't answer any of those, clue for any of those. The power source would, takes four forty volt power off the grid. Where grid is generating that power, at least for the demonstration, we, solar or anything like that, just because it's just for a two-year demonstration. Those, those are all questions that are important for a federal grant. Small starts, not permission. But at this point, I'm, to plug into the grid. I will say overall, there is greater efficiencies with your electric rails throughout the industry. Power part, part. So I can't speak for the efficiency of the power, but I can say power more efficiently gets into our batteries. Certainly.
Hi, I'm just to ask. So so what you're saying is we have no idea how much energy this would cost. But the energy that would be required, where would like would the borough be responsible for that? Because again, we've made sustainability commitment. So I'm just curious how this will impact.
Certainly. And I say it's not that we don't know. I don't know that the power requirements. So I'm sure that the gap, you know, the people are in exactly what you I can get that if that's however. Sorry, your second question, second part of the question. Well, partially, partially it could be. But the other point is those, you know, that game school right now who are would use the train. Some means of getting around right now. During them driving to Philadelphia, riding the train. That's only part of the journey. You can get them as far as Wawa. Except electric trains carry them the rest of the way. So and again, whose bullet is? I don't know if it's kosher. Say it's not our sustainability goal by passing it on to somebody else to use. Possible. I can put up a high power.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Braceley.
Good evening. It's kind of weird being on here. Phil, could you bring up 128 Madison Road? What's this? Just before I begin, and I'm not going to take anywhere near as long as I could have. Back when SEPTA was here and we, as I refer to them back in this last year, but the railroad wars mostly between me and everybody else. You know, SEPTA made it plain what their priorities were at our June 7 meeting, which is on YouTube. Looked at it again this past week. And as they said, their priorities are not with this necessarily. Now, that house that you're looking at, that's 128 Madison Road. And up until I was six and a half years old, that's where I lived. That's the Gladstone Station, a mile west of Lansdowne. My younger brother was year younger than me. We were obsessed with those tracks. I mean, obsessed. Whenever we had a spare second, we were down there getting ourselves in trouble. And every time we did, my, you know, my mom would come down and she'd whack us with a hairbrush. I still have scars. But then we learned that when she does the wash or when she's doing vacuuming, she's not looking out the window. So we'd be right down on the tracks. There's a trestle in the far left portion of the screen. We used to go down there. We had no idea about train schedules or how a train could squish you. But that was my first interest in railroads. And the other thing about that was a lot of freight trains used to come through that would go down the old October branch down south into Maryland. The whole house was shake. And with the horns going off so often, we finally got sick of it and said, we got to move. Anyway, that's that. And one of the reasons I bring that up is because I was accused of not liking trains and not liking rail transportation. We used to have a railway garden in our backyard. And I made almost all the cars for it. This is about 20 years ago. Little locomotive out of brass, all these little cars. Hey. Pretty shortly after. So I made all these. So you don't do this stuff if you don't like trains. Okay? That's good. Thanks. The another thing is that this whole issue is my way of thinking, not really time sensitive. As you know, members of council were here last time. I was really against giving the rail committee money study, which really was not, didn't get into that tonight. Was at the rail rail committee meeting last week, which frankly, I enjoyed. It was interesting. But that presentation took an hour and a half of economic impact. And the amount of development that supposedly this would bring. And I you have to read it. It's not an easy read, I'll be honest with you. But the one thing, I guess, I'm not going to get into all what I wanted. Again, it's not time sensitive. And the one thing that frankly, I don't think most members of council did last year was on the rail restoration web or borough page, they have a number of articles there. And actually, you need to read all of them. And the ones most that you absolutely have to read, no excuses, is the 2018 feasibility study. There are a few others on there, but that feasibility study, it's not the most difficult reading until you get into a lot of engineering stuff. But it will tell you every morbid detail about the project. That's and that's assuming you go from Wawa to here and they build new stations and the whole bit. But so you can kind of factor in like there are about 25 bridges that are going to need to be replaced or repaired. Grade crossings are going to have to be replaced, which that goes with the territory. And I guess my message to you is is don't authorize any money. Don't make anything that you can't take back till you've read those documents. And you might have to read them twice and you've got to study them. But it'll and if you don't have 100 questions by the time you're finished reading that, go back and read it again. And I'm not trying to be negative here. It's just that I have a great interest in this. Just want to what is best for the borough without us going broke. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braceley. Go ahead, go ahead.
Thirty seconds of rebuttal because the early study has to do with this. After we're doing this project to restore they would spend and that that is in twenty eighteen dollars. So Tom said by the time Wawa was finished, that project, a lot more than it are not SEPTA. The borough is not SEPTA. We're not doing the SEPTA project. What we are doing is taking our charge from Borough Council to try to bring train service back. And we're proposing to do for 7.9 plus five million. So less than 15 million opposed, I mean, compared to 300. funding. It's time sensitive because the Biden administration pro infrastructure and pro trains. It's time sensitive. Transportation Department is gung ho on it. They're putting money into grants. So the time is now.
Thank you. And just to be clear, we're not we're not taking any action. This is a presentation by your committee and and what you're planning. So, yeah.
I just want to quickly add, I like trains. How I can't be working for 45 years in this business without liking trains. But then there's business. There's a business plan. I have removed service from Westchester, Wawa, Ivy Ridge, Bakersfield Town, Bethlehem, Newark via the New Jersey way versus the northeast border. I did that not because I didn't like trains, but because the numbers didn't add up that time. And we had to cut so Potsville, I forgot about Potsville. This is we're talking about business plans here that balance out and have are sustainable, not about liking trains. So.
Understood. Thank you. Is there any other things? We're going to have to move on. We're running late. We're running. So, okay. Well, I appreciate your presentation. Thank you so much. And
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much. We're gonna we're going to move on to item number seven, which is schedule a public hearing on March 16, 2022, 7:00 PM to amend chapter 81 of the plastic bag and plastic straw regulations. Mr. Williams?
Hi, everyone. Will Williams, Sustainability Director. The returning members of council call in December. We had a conversation about our single use plastic ordinance, which needs some housekeeping work. Basically, we are amending the ordinance to define takeout and delivery and exempt those scenarios from the 10 cent fee for a compliant bag. The ordinance is marked up with those definitions and that language. Any questions?
I I have one question about takeout. When you, how do you define takeout? Is if I go into Carlino's and I get I get, you know, just groceries, is that considered takeout? Is it?
So here's the definition. Ordered from and prepared by. So, you know, in my mind, it's really only prepared fresh meals. And and if you also recall, our stance on this prior to changing the ordinance was we were going to enforce it. And our business community said, give us clear guidance and a clear ordinance. And so that's really the intent here.
Okay. Are we are we consent to to hold this public hearing? March?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Put that any other comments on that? Questions? Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, so that's going on the consent agenda. Moving to item number eight, which is enter into a one year contract extension with Service Master Services or Custodial Services in the amount of $55,212 and 12 cents.
Hello, Al Telly, Public Works Director. This is simply an extension of the existing contract that we have. There is a 3% increase worked into it. The original contract that was signed allows for a two year extension, but we're doing a one year extension at this time and going out to bid at the end of the year.
This was a 3-0 from the committee. Do you have any objections putting this on the consent agenda? Mr. Allen?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. It might be an attachment, so I apologize. But in the contract, does it build as a certain number of hours per week or a certain number of employees per week that's providing services?
They have specific duties outlined that they have to perform at certain, so many times a week or biweekly or every day, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or things like that. That's all specified in the specifications of bid.
Do you do you offhand know like the estimated weekly number of hours that is?
I'm sorry?
Do you offhand know roughly the weekly number of hours they perform each week?
I don't know that.
Okay, all right.
It's not really.
I could probably add it all up.
It's now it's not hour dependent. It's they basically just bid on it and it takes them two hours to do or 10 hours to do.
Right.
It's the same cost.
Sure.
Any other, any objections putting this up? This mayor, go ahead.
So did I understand you to say that it was a two year contract, but you're reviewing it at the end of the one year?
No, it's a it was a one year contract with the option of a two year extension, so a total of three years. But we were only extending it. We've we're ending the first year ends February 28. But the we're requesting a one year extension rather than a two year extension at this time.
And so you're requesting a one year with the increase at their request? Or are you just?
It was mutually agreed to a 3% increase. They had originally requested a 10% increase.
Okay. Are we good to put this on consent? Okay, please put it on the consent agenda for tomorrow. Thank you. Item number nine is enter into a contract with Stonewood Land Shaping Incorporated for the Marshall Drive Stream Bank Restoration Project in the amount of $106,950.
This is a this is a stream bank restoration project up on just south of Goshen Road. It involves repairing erosion in the rear yards of several residences along that stream. This project has been kind of in the in the works for about a year now. And we got it out to bid. The bid came in at 106,950. That includes the alternates of riprap in place of the gabion baskets and also the alternate to do the an additional area at 745 Marshall Drive.
This was also a 3-0 from the committee. Questions or concerns about this? All right, do I have consent? Okay, we'll put that on the consent agenda as well. Moving on to item number 10, which is approve the easement agreements for the Marshall Drive Stream Bank Restoration Restoration Project between the borough of Westchester and the property owners that are listed.
This is just an extension of the previous one. We have easements that were prepared by the the borough solicitor. We have the residents that have signed pretty much all of them. There's just one that is outstanding yet. But we need these to proceed with the project also.
This was 3-0 from the committee as well. Any any questions or?
Yeah, just one question because I think there's a follow from the committee just based on time. The one that's still outstanding, is this the one that is for sale and that's going to settlement shortly?
No, no. One has been sold and they are actually the buyer. The easement was rewritten. The buyer, the closing is on Friday, this Friday, and the buyer is going to sign it at the closing. Get that easement from.
Thank you. So the remaining one is the one that was a minimal impact if it's not signed?
Right, the there was one more. I apologize. There's two that aren't signed to date. The other one was the De Angel easement. And there was very minimal area that was was going to impact their property. So we're going to just work around their property. They're basically at the very upstream end at the head wall.
Okay. Are we consent on this item? All right, please do that. Consent on agenda as well. Moving on to item number 11, discuss the resolution to abandon West Gay Street from North Matlak Street to North New Street. The committee recommended further discussion tonight. So I know this was talked about in two different committee meetings last week. And I don't know where we're at with it. So.
Yeah, we provided the resolution as an attachment. And just as a reminder to everyone in attendance, this is a resolution, which is one step that has to take place prior to PennDOT actually abandoning the roadway. After this resolution, should it be approved tomorrow, would go to PennDOT and would be probably go through a couple month process before the abandonment would I don't know the right word, take take effect. There were certain conditions applied to the resolution, one of them being that the borough could not permanently close Gay Street at any point in the future without the department's consent. The department in this case is Department of Transportation. And then there were at least three other conditions that spoke to department having a role to play should the borough ever consider changes to traffic patterns, design and engineering or require or PennDOT require the use of Matlak or Chestnut Street as a detour route for future PennDOT construction. And in those cases, PennDOT reserves its right to intervene and comment and 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 be a part of that process. So we asked for some clarification from our traffic engineer and from our the municipal services supervisor from District Six, which is the portion of PennDOT that applies to this region. And he did clarify that although Chestnut and and Market Street is labeled as PA Route Three, it is locally owned. So it's just a it's merely a label on on the roadway. It's not owned by PennDOT and it will get more traffic due to due to any future of closure of Gay Street. closure of Gay Street, so it's important that PennDOT remain some level of control changes to traffic patterns, studies and uses a detour route. The second thing is that we just asked for confirmation from the district that, in the way the resolution is worded, that indeed, that the question I posed is can you confirm that, assuming all this gets approved by council and the department, the department's only concerned with changes to traffic patterns, studies and uses a detour route of Matlack Chestnut going forward, in other words, the Borough can act unilaterally to temporarily close or alter portion of Gay Street that's subject to this resolution after abandonment. And both our traffic engineer and Lou Calvin essay from District Six concurred with that statement, that the Borough can act unilaterally to temporarily close Gay Street after the abandonment, but they did mention, we will have to coordinate with PennDOT's signal section in the future should we act a closure, because as you recall, when we did close Gay Street at least twenty-one, because I, personally, I wasn't here in twenty twenty, the signals were put on, I guess flashing yellow and stop signs were set up, so we did make some changes to the signal management on our cross streets through there, so that would have to be reviewed by PennDOT.
Yeah, I feel like the, the only issue that was brought up was, was, I think Mister Flynn had brought it up about making sure that P A Three was a local and we didn't have to go through them to do something, so it sounds like that is resolved, you, any questions or, or concerns about this?
I do wanna let everyone know that I have received emails in great support of closing Gay Street again for the open-air market with requests for the open-air market to extend into the fall season. That's, I just wanna share that.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, this would allow us the opportunity to do that, but this isn't us doing, you know, this isn't us to approve closing, this would just allow us to do that at our, unilaterally, so. Yeah, Mayor?
I just wanted to say, I think this will give us, be the first step in us making some locally informed decisions about whether to close it or not, that's obviously a separate decision, but at least we'll be in control of it going forward, and so I think it's important that we move to address it and to obtain Gay Street, thank you.
Great, any other concerns with this, or are we good for consent on this? Uh, Mister Hudson, you comment, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I'd like to echo Mayor D Baptiste in that more local control is always a good thing, however, I would just like to bring up a, a piece from the, the attachment that I'm sure you all received, when they surveyed the businesses, twenty-seven percent said it helped, nineteen percent said it hurt, fifty-two percent said it made absolutely no difference, my conversations, I haven't had as many conversations with like residents, but with business owners, whatever plan you come up with needs to have consistency, because I think one of the biggest objections was that a lot of the business owners, that's not what they signed up for, right, like a hair salon on Gay Street where their clients have to, like, so they need to know if we're gonna be doing this, like, we need to have a long-term plan so that people can, if they don't wanna be part of this, they can get out of their leases, so that the bid can actually market it to people who are interested in it, so, you know, I just think that the more clarity you can give the business community going forward, the more long-term planning you can do, will help the businesses who do feel a little rub on this feel a little less, so.
I, I agree, and I think this is, that's the, why we're doing this, so that we can have more consistency, more control, so that we can plan accordingly, whereas before, the process was going through PennDOT, and it took me, it took a long time, we were uncertain whether we'd be to approve, this will give us a little more control, so. Okay, I think we're good for consent, and Mister O'Brien, you wanna talk, you have something to say too?
Yeah, just a quick point of clarification, so, we talked about in public safety, not, I mean, in addition to this, the idea of the closure, I noticed on tonight's agenda that is not on public safety, I was kinda indicating that we talk about that within this agenda item, do you want to talk about that now?
I, I feel like that should be a separate item, is it not under public safety?
It, it didn't make its way to public safety, so, I mean, I guess you would have to vote to amend the agenda.
We could also add it to other business.
Okay.
I know, we just gotta wait till the end, but.
Yeah, no, I haven't waited to the end anymore.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we're good to put this on the consent agenda for tomorrow, thank you. We're gonna move on to item number twelve, which is the proof of sale of a twenty-fourteen Police Ford Explorer Interceptor S U V on municipal bid, I feel like this is pretty standard operating once we get to an older vehicle, any questions or concerns putting this on consent? Okay, put that on the consent agenda. Item thirteen is to accept a thousand-dollar donation from Matthew Adams in exchange for portions of a fallen oak tree on borough property, I, I just would like to know where this is, I don't know, I don't know anything about this.
There was a tree that was taken down by the Borough, paid elite tree service to take that down in the fall, it was, I believe, Everheart Park, it was a, and the logs are still there, and they requested to do, it goes logs, so they could have it milled for making furniture, essentially, and in exchange, they're proposing a donation to the Borough.
I don't see, I don't see any problem with that, any concerns with that, or? Okay, we'll move that to the consent agenda as well. Moving right along to item number fourteen, which is to enter into a contract with How Associates for the Act One Oh One Annual Report and P A D E P nine oh four Recycling Performance Grant, Mister Williams?
Yeah, I say Huff Associates, but your guess is as good as mine, really. So every year, the Borough applies for and receives a grant from D E P to cover our reci-, well, to help cover our, cost of our recycling program, it's based on basically two factors, well, three factors, one, tonnage that gets recycled by us, but not strictly by us, you know, private haulers, Borough hauling operations, population of the Borough, and also, for some reason, if you put in a joint application with other municipalities, you get more money. So when we were doing this alone, we would get about thirty-four thousand dollars every year, very like flat line, we are approached by Huff Associates in twenty twenty, under a model where they would submit a joint application on our behalf, work the math in our favor according to D E P's formula, in, in exchange, they would get thirty-five percent of the additional grant award earned on our behalf, so again, we were getting thirty-four grand on average, Huff has done it the last two years, and they've gotten us an average of fifty-three thousand, so we get twelve thousand and they get paid about seven thousand for their services, so this is a contract to just renew that for this year, which we'll be submitting our twenty twenty-one grant application, you do it after the fact, one thing I didn't mention last week that I'll mention now is, there's some language in here tying it to population, that's because we weren't sure and still are not sure if they're using twenty-ten or twenty-twenty census data, remember, I said one of the factors is population of the municipality, so if they switch to twenty-twenty census data this year, we're normalizing for population, and you'll see the language in there, it's the bottom of that contract.
Any questions about this? Concerns, good to put this on the consent? All right, thank you, Will, thank you, Will, we'll move that on to the consent agenda item for tomorrow, moving on to item number fifteen, direct the Borough manager and solicitor to draft a formal agreement with the Westchester Business Improvement District for advertisement signs at the Chestnut Street Garage.
Yeah, there was a discussion at the Parking Committee meeting regarding several outdoor and, and call them indoor interior signs that are changeable copy signs within display cases, they've aged over time, there's some maintenance issues with them, but what came out of that conversation was to create an action item for tonight's agenda to draft a formal agreement, just ratifying the, the normal arrangement, handshake arrangement that's going on with the Westchester Business Improvement District in the Borough, and this motion would direct myself and the solicitor to work with John and his team to, to draft an agreement for the maintenance rental and, and use of these signs, just so we have it in writing.
Got it, this was a three oh from the committee, any, any concerns with that, or?
Can I just ask? I'm, yes, do this, but the, the improvement of that sign in particular, should that be a separate discussion point, and can we have that added?
Yeah, my, my proposal would be to, with this action item, let us work on the framework of the agreement with the bid for the, for the signs themselves, and then continue that conversation in, in committee.
Okay, so we're good for consent on this? Yep, okay, good, that'll move to the consent agenda for tomorrow. Item sixteen, appoint a member of the Public Safety Committee to meet Community Campus Committee, I'm actually gonna, we just moved this to tomorrow, so we should take action on the applicant tomorrow, is that makes sense, that's what we normally do, is that be okay if we just move that to discussion for tomorrow? Okay, seventeen, discuss the request from the Civil Service Commission to begin the process for the police entry examination and the promotional examination, Mister Dorsey, are you gonna talk about this, since it's public safety?
Yeah, so I, this is on here for three oh, I thought, committee recommendation for further discussion of the February fifteenth work session, but I believe that the police force is opening up applicants due to two vacancies and one retirement for promotion as well, is that correct, Chief Morehead? I think this is something that, unless there are questions from council, that we would move forward with.
So essentially, we're just be approving them to begin the process to?
Correct.
Any, any concerns about that? Okay, we'll move that to consent for tomorrow. Eighteen, discuss entering into professional service agreement with David McMahan Esquire to provide legal services to the Civil Service Commission, I know that the Civil Service Commission is in need of a new solicitor, correct, and they are requesting this? That, this solicitor?
Yes, that's correct, and I think the question that was raised last week was, you know, was this the only contract that we had before us, had the Civil Service Commission put out a request, an R F P, or were we just making this recommendation, I think one of the suggestions, or my suggestion actually, was that, you know, as general practice, that we get more than one contract to review before making a decision, I think this is the only one that's before us currently, is that correct, Chief Morehead? So I would leave that for discussion for tomorrow with council.
Okay, that's, that's fine, I mean, I think we'll move that to discussion then tomorrow. Thank you, Mister Dorsey. All right, item nineteen, discuss generating an eligibility list for hiring and promoting officers.
Seventeen and nineteen seem to be related, right, one is to open up the process for hiring and promoting, and nineteen is discussing the eligibility list, I'm not sure what the difference is between the two.
Yeah, those really should have been consolidated into one agenda item, so the matter is, is council instructing the Civil Service Commission to generate eligibility list for promotion and hiring.
Okay, so it's, it's essentially the next step in that process?
Generate the eligibility list, you have to go through the process of examination.
Understood, okay. Well, that, that'll, I mean, that's up to the Civil Service Commission to, yeah, yeah, okay, so that, that making sense, I feel like that would be a no-brainer for consent, is that make, is everybody okay with that?
Right.
All right, cool, all right, so that, so nineteen will move to consent. All right, now, item twenty, deny the request from the County of Chester for partial exoneration of the twenty twenty-one real estate taxes for the property located at three thirteen West Market Street, Mister Allen, do you wanna go over that?
Yeah, sorry, I can, I can take this one, so the situation is that, my, my understanding of this is that, so when the county purchased their building over on, what was that, West Market? Three thirteen, it's my understanding that some paperwork was filed late, and that, as a result, they're on the hook for another year of property taxes, which they would have otherwise not needed to pay, you can correct me if I'm misunderstanding that, but it, to me, it seems like we have the opportunity to, seems like the county is coming to get some of that exonerated, and we're deciding whether or not we would like to approve that request, and I understand the county was offering to pay through March or April, and the difference we're talking about through the end of the year is about eighty thousand dollars.
Are you here to represent the county, you wanna come up and?
If I may, good evening, my name is Colleen Friends, I'm an assistant solicitor for Chester County, so the, up until April first, the county leased the building at three thirteen West Market, county purchased the building at, on April first, and on May tenth, we applied for tax-exempt status, we were granted that in, in late May, I believe, the twenty-first. So what the county is asking is to be exonerated for the taxes from the time we were granted tax-exempt status, because we have used the building consistent with the exemption, it's only used for government, as most of you probably know, so it's, I don't know, the, the late, the late fee, we're not gonna ask to be exonerated for a late fee, I think it's nine thousand dollars or something like that, so the, the county's not asking to be exonerated for anything from January first through May twenty-first, whenever it was granted, it would only be from after that for the remainder of twenty twenty-one, the exemption takes effect January first, twenty twenty-two, so from that point forward, we're not paying real estate taxes, so it's, I think it's about eighty thousand dollars, I think that's fair, so that's, that's what we're asking for.
Right. Yeah, the, the way the documents, Mister Friend, Friends has, has mentioned, that yes, they were a renter from January till April, which we have not received any money, okay, we've gotten no money from January to April, and then from when they bought the building from April until the end of the year, we still haven't received any money, and the, the crux of the whole story is that the assessment board, or whoever decided to give them their tax-exempt status, said that their tense, tax-exempt status doesn't start till January one, twenty twenty-two. So, from January twenty twenty-one, all the way to December thirty-first, in my opinion, is that the, the county owes that money to the Borough, because the, the county itself has actually said do not tax-exempt till the twenty, the first of January, twenty twenty-two.
Who, who makes this decision specifically? You know who this actually goes to?
Which decision?
Decision to grant you tax, tax exemption, like when? We did, and we said that?
Oh, to grant tax-exempt status?
Yeah.
That was the tax, that was the, that's the county, the exempt, the, sorry, the assessment board.
The assessment board.
So that's been granted.
Okay.
From, from January first, twenty-two on, we are, that, that building is tax-exempt, we do not pay real estate taxes on it.
But when you applied, when you applied in the middle of last year, they said your tax-exempt status would start January one this year.
Yes, we're just asking for, you know, for you to forgive that eighty thousand dollars, it's common practice, from what I understand, and we're, we're okay with whatever the council decides.
I mean, it's three oh recommended from the, the committee, do we have other thoughts on this?
I have a couple really.
Okay, go ahead, Mister Allen.
Just as, you know, Finance Chair now, just the tax-exempt properties in the Borough is a very unique issue that we have, we're very small geographically, and a very high percentage of our properties are either, are used for, you know, public purposes, so we don't have a huge property tax base as a result, so, like, number one, this is already one of the biggest issues we have, trying to meet our bottom line, and the four of us voted to raise taxes last year, and that raised two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, so personally, the reason I recommended this is I, I have a hard time to say, oh, it's, it's, it's fine. oh, it's fine, it's, you know, 80K. When, you know, we asked the residents to pick up a tab last year for, you know, a sizable chunk of that. And then comparing budgets, it's apples to oranges between county and us as well. I did some napkin math. It's like an eighth of 1% of the county budget. And for us, it's like over a third of a percent. So I just, when I weighed all that out, that's why I thought it made sense to try to collect that money.
And point of clarification, that was roughly that we would be asking for the full amount of $102,000 roughly. Would that be correct?
That's correct. $102,427 and one penny.
Thank you.
Well, what are we, I mean, is there anybody who wishes to dissent on this? Or are we putting this on the consent?
I could just make one question or comment. You know, it is the county, we do receive funding over the years from the county for various things in a good faith effort. I'm just throwing that out there, or is that something that is consideration?
I, personally, I feel like you are tax exempt. You should get that right. And I feel like we're trying to, I know, we have, within our rights to collect that money. And I understand that, but I agree with Mr. Recoy. I think there should be some good faith effort here with the county. So I have a hard time just saying, yeah, we can. And I understand the budget difference. I understand that completely. Just not a matter of courtesy, it sounds a bit much. But if we're consent, I mean, Mr. Recoy, would you like to put, would you like to be just put on discussion for tomorrow?
Yes, I would.
All right, so we'll continue the discussion tomorrow. It'll be on our discussion agenda. We'll make a decision tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Do you have, you wanna add something?
Yeah, I just wondered why you think you should be entitled for an exemption for last year?
Well, we're entitled for, do you mean exoneration?
No, yes, exemption, exoneration. I know you're entitled this year, that was made clear.
Right, so we're asking for?
It's not a budgetary concern for the county, is?
Well, frankly, I don't, I don't know the details of the county's budget to that level of minutia. But it's because we have used, we have consistently and always used the property consistent with the exemption, which was granted because we use it for government purposes. And as I said, it's my understanding that this is a thing that is done. So we wanted to ask.
So talking about minutia, as you put it, what did you pay for the building? What did the county pay for the building?
I don't know that off the top of my head. Let me see if I can find it.
Madam Mayor, as Ms. Fields is looking, Friends is looking up that information, there was a very large, significant savings for the county to buy the building from Mr. Eli Khan. That was the reason why they decided to buy the building, because they're saving hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, in rent and all that stuff. So, no, it's a, it's more profitable for the county to buy it off Mr. Khan than just to keep running it.
I would argue that's tax savings for us all, right? Because we all live in Chester County.
So you're saying?
I only listen to one radio station, and that's what's in it for me. Westchester.com, 19380.
So are you saying then that they were, did not suffer hardship to buy the building?
No, no, they were saving the county a lot of money to purchase the building.
Which they would want to pass on to the county seat, Westchester.
Any luck finding?
I don't know who she is or what this is.
That's Ms. Leontino, Finance Chair.
I'm not gonna speak as what it is.
Do you know the answer, Barb? Do you?
Yeah, I can get you that information. I can, I can send it to Mr. Metrick.
Oh, boy, okay.
$42 million, did I hear you correctly? Okay, okay.
Yes, Mayor, it's pretty significant.
Very good.
And we're worried about them paying us $80,000. Come on.
$2,000.
Yeah, $102 for a total year.
Okay, we'll discuss this tomorrow. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
All right, so that'll go on discussion for tomorrow. 21, item 21, discuss the use of ARPA funds for HVAC and building management improvements in the Borough Administration Building and the Downingtown Pike Street Pedestrian Improvements Project.
Yeah, I think Mr. Metrick might want to take this one in a little more detail, but the overview here is we're thinking about ways to spend the American Rescue Plan Act money. And the priority is, you know, investing in our future. It's not just this one-time thing that's cool for right now. It's what's a project we can do that will, you know, either give us a good return on our investment or will help the community for decades. So idea one, which was great, is the idea of updating our HVAC here in this building. Because Will Williams has done a lot of work measuring airflow speeds and all that kind of stuff from our HVAC, and has found a lot of areas for improvement. And I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, 10% ROI-ish? If we were to use the funds just to update the HVAC, and it would also be a huge quality of life improvement. Basically, if it's humid outside, it's pumping a ton of air, and everything just gets real damp in here as a result of how things are. So it's also, we're gonna make some money doing this, and then it's gonna help out employees here. Sounds like a huge win. Is there anything else we wanted to add to that before number two?
I'll just add that we, and I won't go over it in tonight's meeting, but in future finance meetings, it will be a conversation. We talked about the structure and the goals of spending this allocation, this allocation of $2 million over a four-year period, which we've already allocated around $500,000 of to a park improvement project and a stormwater project so far. Those were two allocations done last year. And Mr. Allen's correct, we want to invest this in things that pay us back, things that are gonna be here a long time, things that are gonna relieve some of the pressure on the borough and future budgets by taking the burden off of current capital projects that we're already doing. And we have enough capital projects in the pipeline where this is a really welcome, pun intended, shot in the arm. Because a lot of times, you go out to bid on a project and you think it's going to cost, you know, that's this, this is, I'm leading the witness here to the next project. You think it's gonna cost $84,000, and it comes in at $115,000. And that's exactly what happened on this project that we're gonna discuss next. So we're talking about the structure of how we're spending that money in finance and revenue, and then we're gonna be coming to full council with requests for any appropriations. So the full body of seven, plus the mayor, will see every single request for funding through ARPA and approve it. And then we will be providing, probably gonna start off with maybe biannual, because we only have two transactions so far, but reports of where we're at with the projects that have been funded through Rescue Plan dollars. So you know where we're trending.
And then, yeah, that leads into number two, which is the Downingtown Pike and Plaza Pedestrian Improvement. So the idea here is a safe way to cross the street over at Giant, where that, where that intersection is. And it's obviously one of the tricky projects, because it's on a municipal line there with East Bradford. So the idea is there's, you know, a lot of stakeholders here, including Giant, who years ago pledged $7,000 towards the project. And the idea is the cost of the project increased over time. We have some grant funds for this as well, and it looks like there's a gap of, what was it? Last week it was $70,000. We were talking about splitting that potentially between this municipality and East Bradford evenly, which is where the $35,000 number came from. I noticed this week it's magically $30,000. Did I see that right?
Yeah. Correct, yeah. $30,000 is the ask before council to provide that gap in funding between, and to split that cost share equally with East Bradford to bridge the gap between the expected cost estimate for the construction and bid, which was to be $65,000, and it came in a little over $115,000. So I've spoken with the township manager in East Bradford several times about this. And although action's not been taken by their Board of Supervisors yet, we are in synchrony with them on moving this forward and getting our two boards, we have a council, they have a Board of Supervisors, to agree to extra allocations from ARPA to make this project work. Now, we have to go back to the bidder, who bid on this project, and we opened it in September. So that creates some potential issues. They would have to do it at the price that they agreed to. They may not, and they are outside of the, I don't know the right term, but outside of the, when you bid on a project, you are committed to that price for a certain amount of time, and then you are released from that commitment. Can't come back three years later and say, hey, you bid on this thing for $50,000, go bid and go build it for us. We do have to go back to that bidder and see if they'll do it at that bid price. And if that's the case, project can move forward. And this is an ask from council for ARPA funding up to $30,000, not to exceed $30,000 for this project.
Were we to go back and ask Giant for additional funds?
We did, and they said no.
Thank you.
I think, I think, you know, the time sensitiveness of this area of town is needed, just considering their apartment building's gonna be coming up soon, and, or they're close to finishing it, I'm assuming. And I know that they already pledged to fix some of the sidewalks around their area. So this would be in conjunction with that. I think it would be a great improvement to the pedestrian space there, so, yeah. What's the thinking, Ms. Dorsey?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I have residents in Ward 7 who have actually asked for this specific walkway.
Anybody else on council first before Mr.? Okay, again, Mr. Hudson, sorry.
Just a quick statistic. If you don't have a car and you live in the borough of Westchester, there is no safe way to walk on a sidewalk to any food store in the area.
Yeah, understood. All right, are we, so we'd be consenting to both of these items on here? Is that on item 21? Any reservations or are we good for consent on this? Right, okay, we're gonna move that to consent agenda. Item 22, consider entering into professional service agreement with Arrow Consulting for temporary public work services subject to solicitor review.
Yeah, so this is, just to help with, Public Works Director Vennatelli has resigned and has taken a job over at this consulting firm. The numbers have been crunched, and we can afford, with our budget, it was like 24 hours a week, of roughly 20, 24 hours a week without going over budget. So the idea is that we could do this until we're able to hire, right, to hire the next director, just to get us there.
I understood. How are we on this, consent on this? Okay, yeah, we'll move that to consent. All right, item 23, there's a list here to consider sending the solicitor to attend the zoning hearing board to represent the borough relative to the following zoning hearing applications. I'm not gonna read down A through E, but if you look there, community recommended 3-0 not to send a solicitor to any of these. So unless anybody has any, a difference in opinion for any of these that want to send a solicitor, we can just, this can just go away, I think, right?
Yeah, we had this, and we all agreed unanimously not to send a solicitor. They're pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, so if, unless there's any objections, we don't even need to take action, correct? We could just, this can just go, dismiss this item? Okay, so 23 will be dismissed. Moving on to item 24, discuss entering into a three-year agreement with CGI Communications for a lamppost banner project and approve a call for artists for the art on the banners. Taking this one.
Jimmer Breen from the Public Arts Commission is here. He can provide probably a one-and-a-half-minute overview of the project.
Hey, Jimmer, come on up.
Evening, thank you. This is a cost-free banner program that was made available to us through CGI patients. Is paid for through a sponsorship program. And I have been working with Public Arts Commission and the Harb to, basically on the design aspect of these banners. And we are at a point where we feel like things have been streamlined, and Harb has said that they're comfortable and are comfortable with the pack running with it. Call for art aspect would be that the banners would be utilized how we've used banners in the past with displaying public art from local artists. And so we would, Public Arts Commission would put out the call for art and select the art utilized for the banners. It's a three-year commitment between the borough and CGI. The banners get refreshed every year. CGI handles all the logistics, the maintenance, the production, the hardware. Still a couple of sticking points, I think, to fine tune in the, it's a guarantee of at least 25 banners regardless of the sponsorship. Was a question, one of the sticking points would be holiday decorations. What I would recommend is to try to work into the agreement that the banners, when they are refreshed, there's a pause. They come down, say around Thanksgiving. Our holiday decorations go up, banners go up, maybe sometime in January. So if we proceed, I think the next step starts to fine tune the agreement with CGI. Proceed with the call for art.
Next, what's the cost?
Cost to the borough is zero.
Okay.
Said it's paid for by the sponsors, and they're gonna be targeting local businesses. And the range, I don't have exact numbers, but it's something like, I wanna say $700, $800 for the sponsorship.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
I am close to a number of local artists, and I have been made aware of the banners that are currently up, that some of the artists have the feeling that their artwork was stolen and used inappropriately. Can we make sure that doesn't happen moving forward?
I would love to know what you're talking about. All the artwork on banners at present was, a call for art went out, artwork was submitted for consideration for use on the banners and selected appropriately. Can you be specific? Very curious.
So while you're thinking about whether you might divulge that, I have three questions.
Yes.
One, how long is the sponsorship for? Because surely it's not $800 for three years, or whatever amount you said. Secondly, we have, do we have local ownership on what artists we want to ask to participate? And are you paying those artists? Because you will be generating funds for CGI. So the question is, are the artists expected to donate their work? Or are you going to actually pay the artists for their time and talent? And then my third question is, how long will those same banners be refreshed with rotating sponsors? And the fourth? And the fourth concern that was noted was, we want a maximum cap on those banners. So you've set a 25 minimum, but theoretically you have not given us a maximum.
Okay.
That's four questions.
Okay, first one was, how long is the, the commitment on the program, correct? It's a three years.
So, so you're telling me that a sponsor, a business, will pay you $800 is what the figure you threw out, I believe, which I wonder if that is a correct figure, but they'll pay you $800 to advertise for three years?
They're not paying me.
Me, the company, CGI.
It's not my company.
CGI, they'll pay CGI.
Mm-hmm.
You're representing them?
I'm here representing the Public Arts Commission.
Okay, so question, will they be paying CGI one lump sum for three years so that they'll have advertisement for three years?
I don't know that it's three, they're purchasing a three-year sponsorship. I think the banner program between, the commitment between Westchester and CGI is for three years. My guess is that the sponsorship would be on an annual basis.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we're, and you, sorry, can you repeat your other questions for me?
All of them? Remember none of them?
You asked one question at a time. You asked a lot of questions, I don't remember them.
One of them was whether or not the artists get paid.
Whether we, whether they will be local artists and will you be paying the artists and whether the artists would have input over the design element.
The way we've done it in the past is that the artists submit their work and the Public Arts Commission selects it and it may be used in part or in whole, so we give ourselves some leeway to crop it. We have no funds to pay the artists. I'd be happy to do so if we had the...
I meant CGI, not the borough, or not you.
No, I, no. The expectation is that the art would be donated. It is our idea, Public Arts Commission, bring the local artists into this program. CGI would be happy to just, they have their own graphics design team and they would be happy to just put together any order, you know, generic design and throw banners up. So we are, you know, customizing things to incorporate the local art community.
But CGI is in fact the, the moneymaker here, and so CGI should at least do the right thing and take care of the artists, is my thought. But, but my third question, so you're telling me no at this point, but my third question is, a maximum number should be arrived at for banners?
Yeah, I have no objection to that. I think that, I think there is a maximum number just based on lamp posts and some of the logistics involved in the existing conditions, streetscape. And I have zero objection to their setting a cap on it.
Thank you. I think CGI needs to be a little more clear, their responsibility to our, or perhaps they need to inform you of who's representing them in the arts in your capacity to, with a little more information. Because at this point, I don't feel like, me personally, I just don't feel like I have enough information.
Yeah, I, I think, considering where, where the Public Arts Commission's coming from, I don't think they would have brought this to us unless there was an art component to it. I think it's all purpose of it. So if CGI just came in and said, we want to have advertisements and put up a bunch of ads for businesses around the borough, we wouldn't even be entertaining it. I think the idea is that we're gonna have local artists displayed their, their art around the borough, which will gain exposure to those artists. I still think the artists should be paid, of course, but, you know, so I think that's, that's where that's coming from. It sounds like, yeah. Ms. Marigan, Scott?
I just, the way this was done in the past was not presented appropriately to the artists involved, and I don't want to do that again. I don't want to be a part of moving this forward in the way it has been done historically. But if, if we're gonna re-approach the way we are, we are offering this to artists, fine. But if we are putting a call out for artwork and then printing the artwork that is sent in for consideration, that's an unacceptable method of, of collecting art.
I would love to continue this conversation with you because this is the first I'm hearing of this. In the call for arts, it says intention for the art? So simply by submitting, there's a bit of an agreement to get on board? Shaking your head, no.
That is not an agreement to get on board. That is a call for entry. I just put my own work in for, for consideration. I had to sign document after document after document saying, if you have given this to us, we are allowed to reprint your images. There is not, from my understanding, that was not made clear to these artists.
If I could play, just to kind of look at Jimmer's point of view in the Public Arts Commission, if I'm putting out a request, say, hey, we're putting these banners up, we'd like to display artwork, do you want your art displayed and you submit that artwork? I'm confused where that confusion is then. Sounds like you are saying, yes, I want my artwork to be displayed.
Because if you're considering my artwork, if you are asking if I would like to be in the running, that is not the same as saying, go ahead and print it. It's, it's a, it's a separate agreement. The, the, when you submit something to, for consideration, that is very different than submitting something for reprint. I would submit a different quality image if I were submitting images. I'm, I'm a product designer, I'm not an artist. But it, it would be a different image, it would be a different quality, it would be a different, it would be different. And I, and I would under, the contract would be written differently.
As I said, this is news to me. And I suppose perhaps then, before these call for arts are released, better oversight what exactly is being requested through them.
That's all I'm requesting, is just a lot more clarity when we're with the ask, what are you actually asking for? And if you're going to print something, notifying people that they're, that it is being printed. So first, make it clear in the ask that, that once they submit it, it is, that you are able to reprint it legally owning that image. And then when you do decide to print it, just giving them notification that you are doing that, that they have been chosen.
Can you clarify which banner?
I will not name names, I won't.
No, no, I'm not asking for names. I'm asking which banner project you're talking about.
And it may, if, if these aren't your banners, I don't know which banner project. They were artists in the borough on flags on the light poles.
Okay, doesn't narrow it down.
And my only other...
One, one second, and Ms. Vicaro, are you, are you finished? Okay. Did you have, you do want to go, Ms. Marigan? I'm sorry.
I did, I just had two simple questions, yes or no answers. So the sponsors, they will not have their logos on that, correct?
Correct.
And that the sponsors will know, will be no more than 15% of the total banner, correct?
Correct.
Mayor.
So you indicated, I, I heard you say that there is no cost to the borough, but my only other question is, what, how does the borough benefit?
Well, borough benefits...
Are you paying the borough for the opportunity to do this?
Nope. The borough benefits, in my opinion, by the exhibition of the public art. The local community benefits, the local art community benefits by the opportunity to have their work out there on display. And it's my understanding that generally speaking, banner programs have been very well received and appreciated by the community at large. And having more of them has been a request that I've heard. As I've said, Public Arts Commission doesn't have funding to make a project of this on their own, so CGI is an opportunity to do it. That's why I'm here.
Does...
Wrote out the, the banners that were actually put out, I happen to know where that was. That was the last lamp post banner situation we did, maybe three years ago, I guess now.
It was 2018. This was actually the first series that went out. These were up on High Street and they recently just came down for holiday decoration purposes. And they were kind of at the end of their lifespan as well. There was another series that the Public Arts Commission orchestrated that is still presently up on East Gay Street.
Mr. Metrick, this agreement, are you, is there any issues with this? Is there something we should maybe iron out first before council makes any kind of approval on this?
I would strongly encourage council to have the solicitor look at this at least and check for details. We just talked about business sponsors covering more, no more than 15%. The agreement says 30. So there's some details we need to work out and there's also, I'd need to run it by Kristen too.
Yeah, Mr. Hudson?
I, I, I think it's a really good idea, but I think Mayor D. Bepice brings up some really good points about like the money that's being spent, who's getting this, right? So we've already established that we've done this before, right, that there's an interest in doing it. Why don't we do it ourselves? Why are we getting a third party involved? We have production houses, we have Goshen signs literally right there, we have, you know, Margaritaville Print. Why are we using a third party? Why not just use the bid or another organization in town to just directly deal with these? Then we choose, we have total control over what goes out there. I just don't see why we're putting all this up there and not getting anything in return financially.
Well, yeah, you're right, we're not getting financially, we're also not spending money financially either, so I, I see, I see your point though.
Mr. Tavanna?
Mr. Flynn?
The, the, the maintenance of the, the banners, the installation, the taking them up, taking them down, refreshing them as they go, Public Works does not have the hours to do that. They have 1,000 hours, I believe, a week to do what they need to do and playing with putting up banners and taking down banners is not part of their, their scope of work. I don't, I'm not sure about the dollar, what it actually costs. We didn't make any money on this, this situation before. You know, the, the sponsors took care of whatever it was and the art was, was made to put up and maintain. And the nice thing is Mr. Peron actually allocated a lot more money for more brackets and more poles to put more art up. You know, so it's a, you know, there's a cost to doing business and our Public Works people, we don't have enough time in a week for them to do it.
Can I?
Yeah, that's a lot, that's a lot.
Speak to that a little bit? If we have the break in the year for the holiday decorations, I could see, you know, CGI has said that they handle everything, installation, providing hardware. It's not the same hardware that you're referencing, Bernie, but it's adequate. And if the signs, the banners don't hold up, they claim responsibility to make sure that everything is in good standing the entire time. If we want that holiday window break, I could see some, an argument from them that they don't want to come twice, take down and then come back and put up. They probably want to do it efficiently all at the same time. So that could be an issue where we're left in a position, let them down early, then it's, it's gonna be somebody else that has to do it.
I, I, I think at this point in the discussion, we have a couple of options here and one I would recommend, but one option would be just continue discussion tomorrow on this. The second option would be to table this until we get some more clarification from our solicitor on the deal, on the agreement. I think from the general idea, it sounds like, the idea of, the consensus on council sounds like the idea of having art up around the borough is a good thing, we just need to iron out some of the details and I don't think we're gonna have that answer by tomorrow. So my suggestion would be to table this. Is that, would he agree to that for next, till next month?
I'm in agreement.
Okay, all right. So what I say is that we'll, we'll, we'll table this item till next month. And would this go on a committee for next month or just write full account? Should we put that on the table? Okay, all right. Okay, so thanks, Jimmer, I appreciate the information and I look forward to hopefully figuring this out, but we're gonna table it till, till next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's tabled, item 25, approve the CLG letter of support for the Lincoln Building Restoration Grant, 28 West Market Street.
We had no objections for this. I believe there is two grants they requested for $25,000 each, if I'm not mistaken.
I thought it was one grant for a total of $25,000, if I wasn't mistaken, but...
I thought, yeah, and then there was maybe another one or that Mr. Johnstone mentioned, but we had no objection to this at all.
Okay, we good putting this on consent for tomorrow? All right, we'll move that to the consent. Item 26, discuss the petition by Split Rail for an additional raised dining platform at 15 North Walnut Street.
So the, the owners of Split Rail requested from Borough Council to provide an additional dining platform in the second space on North Walnut Street. We know that the ordinance allows for one space in front of your restaurant, one parking space, and they're requesting a second one. Council, originally, we were under, I was under the impression that they wanted it only during the Gay Street closure, closure, and we weren't sure what was going on with the Gay Street closure at the time, still don't, but they have clarified that they are asking for this platform as a permanent, when I say permanent, permanent during the platform season, you know, year after year. So, but I'll turn it over to the Mr. Schu and the attorney for Split Rail, if there are any questions.
Present the Split Rail Tavern, this is Mr. Paul. And just to be clear and so council knows what he's asking for, spot on the, can you put that, that plan back up there? Spot on the left is the one they've been renting for years. Council knows the season, at the beginning of the season, I think it's April 1st, we need a parking spot, they pay for the spot as if it was a fall. The past two years, as, to help out, because we know it's a rough, three, strong business, they have, Borough has allowed Split Rail, essentially three spots. The spot where it says proposed platform is sort of in a temporary outdoor patio, because it, this is a restaurant town, people love it and they love to sit outside. That's helped tremendously, that extra space. Concern is whether Gay Street open, closes or not this year, obviously Split Rail's not on Gay Street, is if they have to lose that extra spots that they have, it is gonna be very detrimental at a time where it really could, and they're not asking for anything for free, just asking for the right to rent that spot like the other one, if it were rented 20, whatever the, the timing is. Had any problem with that form? Been great operators, cited, choose that's what, these issues. So they were, so to ask, extend, again, we're not asking for a second platform, we want to extend current platform during the season, the season.
So, question for Mr. Gore, this, that proposed platform would be in front of an adjacent property, correct?
That's correct. It's, it's not in front of the Split Rail establishment. And as Mr. Schu pointed out, for the past two years during the Gay Street closure, we have allowed their, the temporary use of that space. Knowing that, knowing now that they want this as a permanent, ongoing, year after year, I would feel more comfortable that the police actually review this for a, you know, as a permanent fixture and not just during the Gay Street closure portion. But that's my, but, but you're right, it's not in front of their business. The ordinance only allows it in front of... The ordinance only allows it in front of businesses. Portion that you control.
One, we. Of Sue Kim's Dress Shop. She has no objection to it now, signed. Study, our only comment on that, obviously it couldn't hurt, but.
Everybody on the street signed it.
We think if the police were involved in a, in a traffic study issue, again, this is up the street. It's spaces that have been used. Season that hasn't already been. Always pointed out, we go to the other neighbors also, based on our meeting, signed the petition too. Lemoncello, other tailor. She's calling her Paris. Call it, and then there's. Pen and Quill or Pine.
She actually likes the idea because it brings attention to her store.
And, and at the last meeting, we, we, we did ask you for that, so I'm, I'm pleased if you could just pass them to my fellow council members to review. But the other item, again, we have that definition of permanent, right? So permanent means year after year that you would have that platform. But we, what we wanted to confirm is what timeframe did you intend to utilize that platform?
I think it's April to what, it's April first to November fifteenth, is that what it is? Yeah. And this year, I, I just had it wrong. We, we took ours down November first. That's what I thought the ordinance was. And for those two weeks, everybody held theirs up, we were down like fifteen percent when we usually go up in November. So we, we went down, uh, those two weeks prior, from our average October, those two weeks we went down in business like fifteen percent. We were normally going up fifteen percent, so it's almost like a thirty percent swing in business. And that platform, the, the, the original platform that we had, that was fine before COVID. You know, it was just for the people who wanted to sit and dine outside, but that's all changed. And it, it's almost like an expectation now that people, when people come out during the summer months, that they're going to sit outside. And we only have four two tops and four four tops. That's not gonna, we're not gonna survive. We're just not gonna survive. And I know that, you know, the, the thing that we talked about last meeting was that, well, this might open Pandora's box. It might, some other businesses in town are going to want this. And I, I just think, yeah, and I think they have to get it. I, I just do. I, I, I mean, it's, it's, it's a matter of survival. It's not greed. It's not, I want to make more money, you know, this summer. It's just, you know, I even saw it this Saturday when people put their outsides out and it was fifty-five degrees. I had actual reservations that walked up and said, oh, you don't have any outside? And I said, no, and they, they just left. This is, this is survival. This is what this is. And if I can get that, that'll be enough at least Sunday to Thursday and we'll, we'll figure the weekends out, I guess, but, but it, it'll get us through.
I have a, a point of clarification. So there, there's existing up there and proposed. That's actually what you have right now, right? What you had last April through November.
No, we had more than that. We actually had another twenty feet. So we had twenty-six, twenty and twenty the last two years.
Okay.
We're actually shrinking it, making it, you know, what the township wants, ranking the, the steel, the pavers. You know, and, and, and the thing is, we have to get on it now because it's not, it's not, it's not being made and.
Right.
You know, um, you know, in, in three weeks.
My next question is for Mr. Gore. So if they had twenty-six, twenty and twenty, I assume the police evaluated that previously?
Uh, no, I don't believe they did. There was kind of, you know, past two years, things were a little helter skelter with how this was being regulated because of the pandemic and the Gay Street closure. I think last year was a little safer than the previous year. You did have some concrete barriers out there, but the prior year they just had some rope and kegs out there. And it was kind of like a rush for everybody to get something in, but the, I don't know that the police had reviewed it previously. This one would be the regular platforms that you see around town as the applicant has indicated. Have another one right down the street that we tabled last month that's asking for the same thing.
Right. And then, you know, the other part of this conversation was whether or not we close Gay Street because of the Market Street work that's being done. And assuming that we don't, I don't know whether we will or we won't, but assuming that we don't, I would imagine that this request will be coming from other restaurants, to your point, as well, particularly during, you know, the April to November. So that, I think that was the discussion last week, right? If we're setting a precedent, we need to understand what that means. I, I would support this. It may, especially now learning that for the past two years, you've actually had more space than this. I, I, it makes sense to me from a business perspective. We just need to make sure, you know, from a borough perspective and space and parking and all that good stuff.
I, I, I think the larger question is, we have an ordinance, right? That controls these. We've had it for several years. So is this something that we should go back and review the ordinance if Borough Council is, is going to support these additional platforms? Is this something that we should look at? The whole?
So I would just say, um, I, I appreciate your effort to stay in business. I know it's been difficult through COVID. I think it's important that we support our restaurants. We do presently on the first block of Gay Street where the barriers start, have two empty spaces in each block. If you look going from Matlak to, uh, to New Street, there's empty spaces already. I would say we need to make sure businesses know that it's important that we encourage them to stay in business because you would be paying for that each year.
Yes.
And then you would be paying, uh, so you pay for the platform each year to the borough for the cost of.
Parking spot.
Okay. And then you also.
Would be some one-time cost. Some.
Right. And then you pay to put everything else in place. So that's, I, I think I heard your lawyer say a twenty thousand dollar investment. So, uh, you know, it's, it, you know, I know restaurants are still suffering the effects of COVID, uh, even though some people erroneously think it's, it's on the downswing and maybe it is, maybe it won't jump back up. But I appreciate your desire to stay in business and stay in Westchester.
I, I have another question about the, the fact that it's in front of a, an adjoining business and, and it's a legality issue. So I know in past, previous years, this has come up. I don't know if it was maybe specifically you, you guys as well, Split Rail. But when this comes up and somebody wants to serve alcohol in front of another establishment, even if they sign that license plate piece of paper, does that actually take them out of liability? Is there going to be any legal issues?
All we have to do, what they want us to do is. Not a rider, what do you call it? Professional insured. So the township's additionally insured and they'll be additionally insured. Um, and the LCB then be in front of some property. It's just, it, it has to be continuous and contiguous, they said.
Good, okay. Mr. Gore, do you, does that all sound correct to you?
Yeah, that, that, that is correct. The contiguous word, it has to be all connected. Uh, but right, they still have to get approved from LCB for that.
The LCB, the only property LCB has with any of these dining platforms in town. That's every single. Yeah, but it, but it, yeah, it's shady with that, but they, they have approved.
One, one of the things, it, it, if the consensus were to approve this, I think in the past, you had an agreement with Sue Kim's Dress Shop for a reserved parking space and there was a sign out there. Now that's a metered space. So I want to make sure we have that properly regulated that people don't think that that space, which is a paying parking space, that it's, it's just reserved for Sue Kim's Dress Shop.
And I let that happen during, during the Gay Street closure. I correct, yeah.
Right.
When I, um, when I went over there and spoke to her and her husband, she wasn't concerned about that. She's, she's getting the parking spot back.
Alright, so I, I think if, if this ends up being on consent, which I'm not sure if it will, but if it does, I think what Mr. Gore brought up about this, we already have this ordained. We need to, I think the Borough, the Council is going to have to revisit this and decide, is this something we want to change? Because this isn't going to be the, the last time we're going to see this. So, uh, I think we need to keep that in mind. So with that being said, is, are we in consent on this or is there somebody who would like to sun discussion?
Well, Mr. Stefano, since, since we have to revisit the entire ordinance, I think it should go in discussion. Uh, and also, Mr. Gore, how many other, uh, businesses, restaurants do we have to have double spaces?
Spoke about this at the Smart Growth Meeting. There are two restaurants, if I'm recalling probably correctly off, off the top of my head, two restaurants that have double spaces. But those two restaurants have double spaces for a very specific reason. Uh, the ordinance that we have in place currently does not allow you to have just one parking space between the curb bump out and the dining platform. Because they don't want a car trying to park between there and possibly hit that. So in those certain circumstances, we've allowed those restaurants to provide that second platform so a car does not park there. Um, so I think there's two of those.
About the curb.
Uh, you know, we, we have to revisit the, the ordinance as well. Thank you.
So with that being said, uh, we can have any further comments if you want, but it looks like we're going to put this on our discussion agenda for tomorrow to take action on. Okay? That make sense? Okay. Alright, you guys got that discussion tomorrow? Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, guys. Alright, so that's going on discussion. Item twenty-seven. This is, oh my goodness, last page. Uh, approve the January twenty-twenty-two HARB certificates of appropriateness. And we don't need to go through both of them unless, uh, um, unless there was any issues. Looks like committee recommended three O to approve these.
There are no issues.
Any, any questions on that? Are you guys good with consent? Okay, so twenty-seven, we'll move to consent. Uh, twenty-eight, we have a couple of things under other business. Uh, now, letter A is to appoint a member of Borough Council, the Westchester, um, Westchester Council of Governments. Okay. That's the cog, right? Yeah, okay. What is this? Mr. Metrick, what does this entail in terms of a, a commitment and time commitment? Do you know?
Pardon me, we just, uh, uh, sat on this last week and set up a tentative schedule for this year. Working to. Find that. Probably, it's like a once every other month meeting. Excuse me.
Looking that up. Is anybody here, um, really dying to do this? Really dying to be our, our representative?
Okay, so, uh, to be clear, this is a, a collection of East Goshen, West Town, Westchester Borough, Thornbury, West Goshen and West Whiteland Townships. This is a good group to talk about regional issues such as EMS, policing, fire services and stormwater management. Those are the big things that come to my mind. So we talked a little bit about agenda items and who's going to host which meeting. We are talking about March seventeenth, May nineteenth, July twenty-first, September fifteenth and November seventeenth. So commitment of five meetings that would typically start early evening, five-thirty, six o'clock or so. Um, and, um, I don't know if we, we made a decision if it was that we were going to do it virtually or in person, uh, starting in March, but that's all COVID dependent.
Mr. Stefano, I will volunteer myself, although the first meeting happens to be my birthday, so I may regret that.
That's okay if you miss that one. I appreciate that.
So will they, they don't conflict with any of our committee meetings or work session, council?
Correct, they do not.
Okay. Um, how, this, is this going to be like a, a motion to do this? Or can we just say, put it on consent that Mr. McCoy would be our representative or?
We could put that on the consent.
We can put this on consent?
Yeah.
Okay. Any objections to Mr. McCoy being our rep? I, I appreciate you, uh, to that, so, okay. So A will be consent to appoint, uh, Mr. McCoy to our cog. Okay, good. Um, alright, moving on to item B of other business. Appoint a member of the Borough Council to Westchester Business Improvement District Board of Directors. And I believe Ms. Vicaro would be excellent choice for that.
I am, I'm very interested. I am very busy. I'm going to do my very best to participate as much as I possibly can. This is very important to me. Um, and if I need help, I'm going to flag some assistance, but, um, I'm hoping that I can do it.
We can help you out and pick you up if needed, so. Alright, so unless there's any objections to that, Ms. Vicaro, we can put that on consent for tomorrow to appoint her in the bid. Okay. Uh, item C, approve the December twenty-one, uh, council meeting minutes. Um, can we put this on consent? Because not everybody was present. So we're good to put on consent if we do, okay. Is there any, any issues with that for consent? Okay, and that'll be consent. And then D is to approve January third, uh, Borough Council meeting minutes. That was our reorganization meeting, uh, minutes. Any issues with that beyond consent? Okay, and then, so that's consent. And then E, just, just a, a brief discussion here. We got E, discuss the Gay Street closure. That's what we added, uh, from earlier, so.
So, and, and I can come back tomorrow too, if you want more thorough discussion. But I know Assistant Chief McClure from the Fire Department has been hanging out here because Fire Department has some input here. So at least, uh, here if they have any concerns. So council, public safety tasked me in November, get a group together to explore the Gay Street Open Air Market in twenty-twenty-two. I sent out a memo, uh, which we did discuss at public safety to, um, to council and, uh, it's now publicly available. So the biggest challenge for us to do an open air market in twenty-twenty-two is going to be the PICO Harmony One project, which is basically the harm, what they're doing right now on Gay Street has been called Harmony Four. Harmony One is on Market Street from New all the way to High Street, also affecting Church Street from Gay Street down to Minor. The issue will become closing, having Gay Street closed at the same time that Market Street is closed, even Market Street being closed temporarily. Now, PICO has indicated, you know, we'll try and do like, in certain areas, we can do one lane. Um, being fully transparent, PICO is wildly optimistic about their timelines and about their, when they're going to close things or have one lane open. It's been problematic for us in the past. So this, that's the biggest challenge on this. So assuming the council is in support of doing the open air market in twenty-twenty-two, the, there's really three possibilities as I see it. One, the open air market doesn't happen because of the PICO work. Two, we're do a full week closure like we have done, knowing that the Market Street, um, closure is going to have impacts on both traffic and emergency services. Or three, we do a more weekend styled approach where it would be Friday through and Monday morning. Now, they're not in order of preference at all. If we did do a more weekend focused approach, we would need to use lighter barriers than what we have done with those big concrete bin blocks. And that would require the Police Department input on what those barriers could be and the level of safety with doing that option. Um, so that's kind of the three, the biggest things. I don't know, Assistant Chief had anything on the Fire Department perspective? But, or council?
Yeah, we, we did receive, or I did see the memo from the Public Safety Committee meeting, um, about the concerns from the Fire Department and the Police Department, considering Market Street would be, have some closures due to the PICO project. Uh, does anybody on council need the, the Fire Department to kind of give a little overview of their concerns? Or otherwise, I think what we need to do is council right now is we don't need to take any action, obviously, but we need to give some direction to bid, to, to the, um, our Borough Manager about what do, what do we, what are we thinking here? Do we want to do this at all this year? Do you want to do it in, you know, limited capacity? We, we have some options, but I think we need to start giving some direction. We start, we need to start doing it now, so, yeah.
Mr. Stefano, when we first started this, this dream with, uh, Mayor Herron, you know, my initial observation was we had to do commerce. you know, my initial observation was we had to do commerce Monday to Thursday. And do the open air market Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday and Sunday night. The, and use all temporary stuff. Unfortunately, what happened, to give you a little backstory, the Federal Highway Administration and also Commonwealth didn't want us to be able to do that because of various reasons. So we did the 24/7, you know, from the beginning to the end, which made it almost a construction site the entire time we, we've done it. As, as we move forward, if we get permission from the Commonwealth to, to have them abandon Gay Street, I think the businesses would buy in a lot better Thursday or to Sunday so they can get their trash out, get their supplies in, and keep the streets clean. And of course, then we have to, the, the police has to design a, a better thing. And I, and PICO really doesn't work on the weekends. They, they close up shop around 3 o'clock on Friday, right, John? Then you see them at 6 o'clock on Monday morning.
And just, I mean, with the barriers, I know there's been discussion about, you know, getting those cylinder barriers that would recede into the street. Unfortunately, on Gay Street as it's currently constructed, there's just not enough available real estate underground to properly place them. I mean, setting aside, they're obviously a very expensive option, but in terms of long-term planning. And I know there was discussion earlier about, I do agree, we have done this in the last two years as a pandemic level response. We're not out of the woods yet, but I think we do need to start thinking as a town, a long-term strategy for what the town wants Gay Street to look like and not just make the knee jerk. Because I think that, I do agree with Mr. Hudson, that would incentivize business investment in the street. But we just need to kind of, but this year, obviously, we have a huge challenge in front of us.
Yeah, I, I am always for, I, I have been from the start, a 24/7 closure, even like all year long. And I, I gained that opinion after talking to a couple of different municipalities that do that 24/7. And, and the, the consensus from both the people that I talked to was that all businesses benefit. So it doesn't matter what your business is, just because they can't park out front doesn't mean that somebody won't come and, you know, go to your retail store or your, your hairstylist, whatever. So I, I, I see it as a, as a, that's my opinion. I'm one person, so that's what I would like to see. Obviously, this year presents a specific issue. So I appreciate the long-term approach. We need to have a long-term plan, but we also need to decide this year because of this specific issue with Market Street, we need to come up with a plan. What do we want to do this year? So I don't know if anybody else wants to give their two cents and.
I'll weigh in here in that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, again.
You know, and you alluded to it earlier. I think Chief Morehead and Chief Pelna indicated that they would advise against it for the safety reason. And to your point, John, I think it gives us an opportunity to come up with a real solution. And one that is, you know, going to benefit everyone and aesthetically pleasing and gives businesses an op, an opportunity. I, I would be today support not doing it this year and providing businesses the ability to extend, like we just did, we just discussed with Split Rail, give businesses an opportunity to extend outdoor seating for restaurants. And I don't know what the incentive is for other retail stores or spaces, but I, I think that's how we should look at it for 2022 so that we can plan properly for the summer of 2023.
I think everyone's aware that I'm very much for closing 24/7. I think consistency and expectations have been, expectations have been set and consistency is extremely important for people visiting the borough, people living in the borough, and even for the businesses who are opposed to it. It, it forces some adjustments rather than just planning for what is coming next. I think we need to just start changing our policies of whatever trash pickup and what else is going on now. I, I think that we need to consistently do what we have done. Yes, we need to do it better, but going backwards and saying we're not closing this year is, I don't think that's a good move.
I just have one, one comment about this. I am in fa, I am in favor of the closure. I am in favor of a modified approach for the simple fact. One is the safety concerns that we can't close at 24/7, but I do believe we should be closing it on the weekends. Very similar to what Phoenixville does. If Phoenixville can do it, Westchester can do it. And the other aspect is the revenue that we lose from parking. The parking on those streets. I don't know what that is, or the Finance Committee has come up with that number. But that's going to be pretty significant. Not everyone is going to be going to the garages. Not everyone is going to be walking in town. But for those businesses that do rely on people that can park out front in the foot traffic, it makes it a hell of a lot easier as well as the deliveries, both to and from those businesses. If you talk to those people, the business owners, I mean, they are in favor of a closure, but more modified for those reasons that I had mentioned. And I hope, and I believe John probably has heard that as well. So that's just, that's just my take on the closure.
So there are 61 spots just for whatever you're doing, between those four blocks. Okay, Mr. Gore.
Just want to make one point. On this, on the earlier version of this memo, there was one additional challenge that was on there that was removed. That's the Zookin Hotel project. We are, I'm hopeful that the project will get going soon. They were hoping to do demolition this winter. Obviously, it got delayed. If they decide to start this project and start demolition this spring or summer, that's going to be a challenge for people who want to be dining on Gay Street. Not, not to mention a safety issue, but noise, dust, odors. So I don't know why it was removed from the memo, but definitely want to have, make sure that Borough Council is aware that that project could happen. The other thing is the, with the PICO project, with the paving, the schedule of the paving, certain restaurants may not be able to put their platforms out after paving their streets. So you have to make sure we schedule that appropriately.
Yeah, understood. So I, I'm taking a little bit of a tally here and I got a couple, two of us are for full-time, two of us for like the modified weekend and then I have one person so far that's not in favor of closing at all. So we're kind of split, but it sounds like we want a closure of some sort, which is good. So I feel like that's enough for me to say that we should at least explore options to close, even if it is a modified.
Okay, so one other ask would have of council. I know we are in the process of reclaiming the road, but I would ask council to instruct the borough to begin the process of talking to state that if we do not get local control, at least what the permitting process looks like, get that ball rolling. They, if we get permits, it does not mean that we automatically need to put up barriers and open the Gay Street open air market like it has been. But the permitting process takes a while and it's better to just start that now if we can.
Understood. Mr. Allen.
The biggest thing that stuck out to me last week about this was the issue with the intersection at Market and Church. Just with access on Church Street there. And I know, at least from the memo, it sounded like they were still waiting to hear back from PICO about what their, or end dot, about what their actual detour recommendations would be for that. So that's something that, you know, I'm looking at and I'd like to see before committing one way.
So Al and I met with PICO at our request. We did a site walk of the entire Harmony One project, so starting at New Street and walking all the way to High Street. They do not have a detour plan put together yet and they have not submitted one. They had originally, for those who remember when the Justice Center was built, that block of Market Street between Darlington and New Street was shut down solidly for weeks, if not a month or two. They can't seem to find that because that was a paper copy, so they're in process of doing that. But the physical plans of what the work looks like, we do have detailed plans and Al does have them.
And I'm, I have to lean a direction impartial to the full closure. I like the year-round idea as well. So in, you know, in my mind, if, you know, just to be transparent, we're talking about with Gay Street, we, we'd be shifting the, I guess, what is that, westbound traffic up the Chestnut Street. We're talking about eastbound traffic on Market Street. So the westbound flow of traffic is going to be impacted a lot as it reroutes to Chestnut Street, which is, you know, obviously the case. And so the question is, with the, with the Market Street closure due to PICO, I, I would expect all of that to probably, that traffic to generally go to Price Street. I don't know how else we would be going eastbound. So just something to keep in mind. I want to see the detour plans and how that would affect safety, but to keep in mind is that, it's not like that traffic's going to go on Gay Street. And I, I get there's cross-street issues and that's what I want to see before, you know, heading one way or the other.
I would hope, I mean, I'm just, the way that they seem to work and our interactions with them, I would like to say that I could give you that in March. But it could take them to May. I mean, they're on their own schedule. They're really not beholden to anybody. You know, Al and I meet with them every week and pester them with questions, but, I mean, they're still trying to figure out to complete the Harmony Four project, so they still need to do High Street between Market and Chestnut, those two blocks. And then they're going to really start in earnest on Harmony One. So they're hoping that they start in June. But, I mean, when they start is also kind of, they don't know. And their timelines are always, as I said, way overly optimistic. I mean, they say this will take nine months for Harmony One from start to finish. I would probably say 12 months, just on their track record.
The other thing is, you know, there's a world, there is a world where there's a universe somewhere where Gay Street gets shut down 24/7 all year round. That ceases to exist for traffic flow. Roadwork still has to get done somehow. You know what I mean? So it's going to be, you know what I mean, like, it, it's going to be something we're going to have to think about regardless, if that's the direction we want to go in long-term, because Market Street will need work again.
I mean, right now, and just to be transparent with council, in discussions about the year-round option, the business community is not, as I've polled them and talked to them, are not in favor of that. I mean, there's, it's very de minimis, the amount of folks because the thought is there won't be, and they're right, I mean, during the cold months, nobody's going to be sitting outside. So there would have to be a, a long-term vision on that, but as we sit right now, there, there'd be very, very little support within, whether they're Gay Street or other businesses in the downtown for that approach.
Understood. Okay, Mr. Hudson.
Two things real, just to answer your question, Councilman McGinnis. I believe it was about $25,000 we were missing every week that the count, that Gay Street was closed. So just for anyone who wants it closed all year round, that's about $1.3 million we're losing in parking revenue. I just want to, and, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was around that ballpark, right?
Pretty good memory.
I did run for mayor, so.
$35,000.
$35,000, so it's even worse. Okay, so I just want to give you that number, but um, the other thing I think that was really, I think, totally not addressed at all last time we closed on K Street, handicap accessibility. I mean, because it was, it was addressed. Well, I just felt like there was a lot of problems that I saw that, I mean, if we are going to do this long-term, we're going to have to think about how we're going to handle the sidewalks, right? Like, you shouldn't be expecting someone in a wheelchair to have to go all the way to the end of each of the roads in order to get up on. I mean, we already have a lot of accessibility problems in the borough in general, but I don't think that we can forget about these folks. If we're going to be investing the money in it, we have to also be thinking about ramps mid, mid-street. Other things that we can do to help people who are not just mobily handicapped, but blind people, folks like that, right? So just keep that in mind because I, I feel like those folks tend to not get thought about in these kind of situations.
Yeah, there, there was a specific issue with a friend of mine who was in a wheelchair. And he lived in the borough at the time and he had an issue and it was, he was brought up with Mayor Herron at the time and there was issues with that. You're right, things we had to think about, but it was addressed and fixed, but, okay, so.
And can we, I guess at this point, direct the police to at least give us their thoughts on what the, the level of barriers? Because I think that will help inform council.
Yeah, we, we need, we need an answer on barriers in terms of, we need options. That's what, because the council is going to need options. We need options on, if this is permanent, what do those barriers need to be? If this is weekends, what are those barriers going to be? So however, we need to, you know, direct police, the police department, we need to do it, but for sure, like, yeah.
And Mayor did.
I just wanted to say that Chief Morehead and I have talked about it and he does have another barrier in mind. It's more cylindrical in nature. I, I don't know what it's specifically called, but he, he does have another barrier in mind. Just to answer your question, one question I had, were you, did I hear someone saying they were looking at paving? Was it Gay Street?
So Gay Street, yes, Gay Street will be repaved where they've done the Harmony One part. So from Walnut all the way to New Street, they will pave it curb to curb. That should occur in the spring.
From Walnut, not from Atlick?
No, because they didn't do any work. So PICO is paying for it. The one issue they, so because there's a concrete base there, this is more than you probably need to know, but there's a sticky substance called RollyMac they have to apply. It probably would have been paved in the fall, but they've had problems getting a contractor who can do that RollyMac work before the actual blacktop goes down.
Are we thinking they're going to do that before we institute the open air, if that's their pleasure?
They should, you know, in all indications, because they're done the work on Gay Street, so they can pave. So as soon as the mills open up, which is usually about early April-ish, they should be able to move forward with the paving in the spring. That is their plan right now. I would suggest we kind of, at least for this year, look at a open air market from Memorial Day to Labor Day kind of event, whether it's weekend focused or whether it's for a full week, just because of the challenges we're currently facing.
Well, that certainly would make, go a long way to making Gay Street look better, aesthetically better.
Sure, yep, absolutely.
Okay, so I feel like we have a general
Yes, yep.
direction for you and, yeah, great, okay.
Thank you very much.
But there's no other comment on that. I feel like we're finished all over. There is no more business, so this meeting is now adjourned.